The order. Judge Gosskels is not here this morning, so I'm gonna be presiding over the meeting. We'll start with the pledge. Who's gonna lead it? Please rise. Start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Let me read this to the fire in the United States of America. In the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm with the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Called to order the special meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, February 18th, 2011, 7:00 AM. Well, we're a couple of minutes late, but that's all right. We're gonna, if there's no, any public comment? Should we take this up now or after executive session? Is this a particular tour? Is this the table that I opened in the last meeting? We can take it? Mr. Tommy Ramirez? Reference to the science lab building? Come on up, Mr. Ramirez.
Commissioners, good morning to you. I requested to speak to you this morning. It was concerning an agenda item that we, our Juvenile Justice Department had on your previous meeting concerning the donation of a building from the Brownsville ISD School District that was a result of a partnership grant application that was submitted, and as a result, it was approved, and under the grant, it included science labs, buildings that would be built all over the Brownsville ISD School Districts. Included in that, because of the partnership, they were also awarded the funds to build a science lab on our property, Cameron County property, there at the Daryl Hester Juvenile Justice Department. And we were notified some time back that we had been awarded the funds for the building. The school district actually is gonna do all of the work, build the building. Our county people have met with the school district people, gone out to the site and looked at the site that we've selected that will best service all of the young people that we are serving there at the detention center, at the boot camp, at the Juvenile Justice School, and at the Army program. The value of the building, when it's all said and done, including the building and all the amenities and the parking lot, the school district will be spending approximately a little over a million dollars to provide this facility for us. There was a question at the last meeting concerning about who would pay the insurance and who would pay the utilities. And I feel very confident, very comfortable that within my current budget, without asking for any additional money, that we would be able to pay the utilities and the insurance, 'cause we've looked into it, it's fairly a nominal fee. And when we think about the value that it's gonna bring to our property and to the assets for the county, because I spoke to them yesterday, and the way the grant was written is we will, at the point that it's completed, where we will be handed over ownership documents of the facility that will enhance the value of that entire complex. I don't know if that answers the questions that you all had the other day, but that's, those were the questions that were posed to me after the meeting. We had thought it was gonna be on the agenda rollover to this meeting, but I found out too late that actually I have to resubmit it onto the agenda again, and I've already resubmitted it, and it should be on the next meeting. The only thing is, I may be in Austin at some legislative sessions at the next meeting, and I needed to address it as soon as possible before they start any construction work, or they've already done the surveying work, but they're not gonna make a move on anything until basically you all have approved acceptance of this facility.
Moving along, we're gonna, if there's no objection by any member of the court, I wanna take item six B out of order, approval of claims. Today's payday, and sometimes checks go out early, so we need to take care of that first.
Judge Protem, commissioners, good morning. For your approval, I have payroll for $1,669,374.44. There was one additional check, payroll check that needed to be run. You do not have it in front of you right now. I have it here with me right now, and I will, if you'd like to see it right now, I will give you the check register right now. If not, it is a check for $206.03 that needs to be added to that, and it was run yesterday. I also have warrants number 253034 through 253416, warrants number 253462 through 253463, warrants number 253467 through 253835 for your approval. There's also included the contract payments that are, contract payments that are due at the end of the month for that month. I would request that the court approve those to be released on February, the following Thursday, which would be on February the 25th, I believe, and that'll get them close to the end of the month for that month. I also have health-related medical and prescription EFTs that were done for $224,284.06 for your And I will give you the check register for the additional payroll check that needed to be run for $206.03.
That's just one check?
It's just one. If you like, I can hand it out to you right now.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I'll second the motion. I do wanna, you know, want a warrant on one check here. It's 00253708. I'll abstain on that. But I'll motion everything else.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll second that one myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to executive session, item 1A, consideration and possible approval of the equal distribution of the family protection fees to Family Crisis Center, Friendship of Women, and CASA pursuant to Vernon, Texas statutes annotated 51.961DNE. I believe that one's gonna get brought into open court. Therefore, the only item left for executive session is to confer with Commissioner's legal counsel concerning Dora Torres et al. versus Omar Lucio et al. in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Texas, Civil Action Number 09CV83, for discussion of status of case and possible settlement pursuant to Vernon's codes 551.071A and B. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
It'll be in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve, to accept the, accept the report from legal counsel and approve action?
On item B.
On item B, yes.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go ahead and take care of, if there's, are there any, before we start the presentations?
Commissioner, we need to go to item 2A.
We did?
2A, oh, okay, right, we, right, open session, okay.
We did?
No, actually, we were just gonna bring it to open, do you have a presentation? No, no, we approved 2B. 2A is one that we didn't discuss.
Yeah, we didn't discuss 2.
Right, but DLB was gonna bring it up in open session.
You can handle it now in open session.
Okay.
Okay.
And what this is, commissioners and Judge Protem, is the family protection fee that is collected on every case that's filed, the fee is set aside for certain types of nonprofit organizations to be distributed. We only have three that qualify, and historically, the Commissioners' Court has just divided the amount collected for the year amongst the three nonprofit organizations, and they are CASA, Friendship of Women, and Family Crisis Center.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, before we get to the presentations, are there, let's take care of the consent items. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the consent item to be discussed?
I need to pull item 5H and table 5 triple N. And pull item 5V as in victor.
V?
V as in victor.
I need to pull item 5Y and 5 double H.
And item P. Like in boy?
B?
I'm sorry. Boy? B? No, P.
P. P as in Paul. Any, any others?
That's all I have.
So, do I hear a motion to pull items H, P, V, Y, double H into table item triple N?
And double O.
And double O.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay.
And I move to approve all the others on the consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Let's start out, I guess, with item H, 5H.
Judge Protem, commissioners, good morning. I asked this table to decide if it would be pulled out for discussion. I just wanted to give the Commissioners' Court a brief explanation. Mr. Petrie here from Aflac is here with us today, and I just wanted to give a brief explanation as to the benefits provided by this additional health, this existing plan that we're gonna offer the new employees.
I hope you had an opportunity to review the information that was provided for you with that. Excited to be able to offer something like this, to present this to you for the county employees. They are group, it is a group product, but it is a voluntary group product, so it's a person's choice where they might want to do. The advantage to that, of course, it's, the county's not involved in, of course, putting any money in this, but it allows the employees to pick up products that most all of us need at group rates, and they can get it at guaranteed issue. On the critical illness, it's unique to the industry. The industry's probably gonna have to follow Aflac's lead with this. Most critical illnesses are in our old critical illness, once a person received the lump sum benefit. So this is a lump sum. Let's say a person has a heart attack, they have a $25,000 lump sum benefit that they chose to purchase. One time, they get, they send in the diagnosis, they get the check. With Aflac, normally, we pay it within four days, that's our national average, so they're gonna get the check very quickly, about, you know, about as fast as mail can get it to them. The great thing about this product, all everybody else's product goes away. Once it's been paid, their products go away, they've completed their contract. This has an automatic reset. The very next year, if they have a second heart attack, they've got another $25,000. Or if they, the unfortunate person has a heart attack, and then kidney failure within the same year, we'll pay for both benefits at full value, and each time, those reset. And there's nothing like that currently on the market outside of what Aflac's offering with this group product. So it's a tremendous benefit. It's not a good thing to have a heart attack and then lose your supplement, because you can't get another one. But this is one of the great things with it. It does take 20% for this to be guaranteed issue, so 20% of the county employees will have to say, "I want to have a critical illness product." They can choose any benefit from $5,000 up to $50,000, so it becomes guaranteed issue regardless of whatever pre-existing condition they may have. So with this, it does become a guaranteed issue product. On the hospitalization, it's guaranteed issue to anybody during the open enrollment, so it doesn't matter, it is definitely guaranteed issue. That one has a great benefit of, if you, the person will take it and use it, they can receive half their premium in a year just by going to the doctor, or taking their family members to the doctor. And so that one doesn't take a 20% enrollment, it does take 25 people to sign up for to have a group. So that's just a quick overview for you, give you an idea of the prices. If you decided, one of the employees said, "Hey, I want the hospital product, I want Plan One," that's going to, best I can tell, when I look at the county benefits, is gonna, if they wouldn't have a hospitalization, it should cover most or all of their out-of-pocket expense, can't guarantee it, but should cover most of it. That's gonna cost $17.54 per pay period with it. And it depends on the critical illness. It can be anywhere from $1.95 up to $13 a pay period, depending on age and the amount they choose. Any questions? All right, I know that's a quick overview, but I know you all have a whole lot of time, so any questions at all about?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the voluntary group hospital and critical illness insurance to the existing Aflac Group Health Plan?
Just one question to Robert. I move to approve it, but I have one question. The other folks that might do this same type of thing, Robert, as competitors listed A, B, C, D, E, you know, would they have an opportunity to come before us just as this one did?
Well, Aflac is an existing provider.
Right.
To the county, approved by Commissioners' Court some time back.
But some of the other competitors might offer similar programs, though.
Right. If they do, I guess we can always try to reach out to them and see what kind of services they offer, and I don't know what other would be comparable to this specific plan.
Well, I just saw on there, you know, like competitor A, competitor B, competitor C, competitor D, competitor E listed here, so I would imagine that there's others. And I know we have a number of folks.
Correct.
That already do business with the county in some of these areas.
David, if you don't mind if I...
Not at all.
Our competitors that we, that we work with, and fortunately, I have a good relationship with Carol and several others.
Right.
Is, they're already offering that product on an individual basis. Aflac offers those, we've been offering that type of a product on an individual basis, but not under, with the group, it's guaranteed issue. And I don't know if, I don't represent those other guys, so I can't address whether they do group products or not. This is, this is something new to Aflac in the last year, starting 2010, to offer these type of group product. The advantage with this is the fact it's guaranteed issue, so if someone wants to get a cancer product individual, they can't get it if they have cancer. I mean, it's gonna be a turn down.
Right.
Okay. This gives the opportunity to do the guaranteed issue. And when Aflac doesn't care, which is amazing, if a person has another cancer product, they don't care if they have an Aflac individual cancer product. They can still pick up this critical illness even though it has a cancer benefit, so I hope that...
Yeah, that kinda answers it, but it also tell, you know, if 25% of our folks don't buy in, we can't have...
Well, the group will, make a group at 25.
Right, that's what I mean. If 25% don't buy in, we don't make a group.
25 people make a group.
And in the other instances, you know, it's an individual basis regardless of the group.
That's correct.
So we need to make sure that we're careful with that, you know, but I think it's great, you know?
Well, and what you're saying is, these other services are available individually if anybody wants them. What this offers is, if you get at least 25 people that fall into a group...
25% of the county employees. No, 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 no.
It's 25 people.
People? Okay.
So if you get 25 people together and 18 of them have pre-existing cancer, they're still coverable.
They're not. They're, they are on, they are on the hospital, but not on the, not on the critical illness. We're going to have to have a 20% participation rate for it to become guaranteed issue.
So 20% of the employees have to have it, and then it is covered?
Then it is covered.
For guaranteed issue.
For guaranteed, okay.
For guaranteed issue.
So, and what he brings up, because in here, your, your information talks about competitors, and because you're comparing yourself to competitors, he wants to know, well, who are these competitors, and do they wanna make a presentation?
I can consult with staff and, you know, also reach out to the different competitors that we have, approved vendors, so we can consult with them as well and see what type of services.
Very well. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item P, consideration approval to purchase two water pumps and accessory for public works through the by-board contract?
Good morning. I put this item, I asked about this item. My curiosity is, where are these water pumps gonna be? Are they gonna be for all, used for all precincts? At one time, I know precinct two had some water pumps. Each precinct had different water pumps, and they've kinda gotten moved around, and we don't have any emergencies right now, but at the point, we need some. Where will these be?
They'll be at the vehicle maintenance yard.
Which one?
The vehicle maintenance yard.
Okay, the main one?
Yes.
Okay, available to any one of the precincts?
Yeah, we'll determine whenever we decide who's flooding first.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second. And I know that originally, he had asked for four of these things, you know, to have one strategically located, but the budget did not allow for that.
Right. And we trust that you're gonna use them where they're needed the most.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5V as in victor, consideration and possible approval of the Cameron County Department of Health Human Services Animal Control Program fee schedule for providing animal control assistance.
Good morning, Judge Protem, commissioners. This agenda item is tied into our animal control presentation, so if the court would allow us to present prior to discussion, it might be beneficial for this agenda item.
Okay, and any...
The only consideration we had was Commissioner Garza may have to leave early, so...
How quick is your presentation? It just is right here, right?
I would say 10, 15 minutes, unless you wanna table it for the next Commissioners' Court. I believe that...
Okay, we'll take, we'll take this one up at the end, so you can make your presentation.
Okay.
We'll pass on this one. 5Y, consideration authorization to charge a one-time recovery cost for 90-day and annual park toll tags at East LeBlanc, Andy Bowie and Adolph Tomah Parks?
Good morning, commissioners. They're recently put this item on the agendas, because currently, the toll tags that we have in place now is costing the county $5 a tag, and we wanted to see if we could add that charge to the 90-day pass and also to the, to the annual pass, so we could recover that charge, so we could recover the $5.
That's a one-time charge, because we use that same tag, right?
Yes, sir. It's a one-time charge, and another thing we're gonna ask is, for some reason, if the windshield gets replaced on the car, do we need a charge for the 90-day pass or the annual pass, or can we just charge for the tag? We have had situations where somebody says, "You know what, I was involved in an accident, my windshield was destroyed, you know, can I just pay for the tag instead of paying for the whole 90-day, for the 90-day pass or for the annual pass?" So we wanna get direction from the court on this.
You mean like a replacement?
Like a replacement, yes, sir.
I mean, if they bought a 90-day pass, you'd figure all they'd buy is a replacement tag that's here.
Are you, just the $5, okay, we just wanted...
Just make sure when you give them the new one, you're not giving them 90 new days, you're just continuing whatever they haven't used.
And that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna do.
I don't see a problem with that.
You don't see it?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item double H, discussion, possible action to allow Bill Gardner run in Texas to hold the South Padre Island sand crab 5K and 10K night run in the post-event in East LeBlanc Park on April 2011. There's no, is there a date?
Oh, he said it's gonna be sometime in April.
We don't have a date.
We don't have a date yet, you know, he's looking towards the, either the last weekend in April, mid-April sometime. What this gentleman wants to do, he wants to, he's working together with the South Padre Island Convention Center to hold this run. This run's gonna be at night, you know, it's, it starts at 9 o'clock at night at East LeBlanc Park, and then the post-event, which is like the award ceremony and the barbecue, and it's gonna end at 1 o'clock in the morning. What, what we need is just direction from the court, because our park closes at 11 o'clock at night, and we, you know, we stop collecting at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, you know, depending on how busy it is at the park, and we wanna see if, if you want us to stay open longer and, you know, extend the hours for that event.
For the latecomers?
For the late...
We're gonna make money extending the hour.
Okay.
We just need a date.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're gonna work on a license agreement on this. This is gonna be back on the agenda, because we have to execute a license agreement with them, because we need, we just need direction from y'all, and if you say it's okay, then my next step is to work on a license agreement with them, put it on the agenda and on the license agreement.
We acknowledge your report.
They're also gonna hire our local law enforcement officers, the off-duty law enforcement officers as security, and they had one, this is gonna be the first annual, they had one in Galveston that attracted 1,500 runners at night, and what they do, they're gonna run from the East LeBlanc Park, I guess, all the way to somewhere on the island and just run back, and, but it's, supposedly, they're trying to attract between 300 to 500 runners.
We're gonna roll?
Well, I'm gonna roll, because I'm a little too big, but...
I'll go watch.
Yeah.
We'll do the barbecue.
Well, we're in the barbecue.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would move that we acknowledge your report and then act on it when you bring it to us with an agreement and a date.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item double O, consideration authorization to add to evaluation committee for the following delinquent tax collection attorney RFP number 1730, add evaluator Tony Isaguirre.
I put that item, are you adding Tony to the, to the...
That's a request.
Is that what it says?
Yes, sir.
I wasn't sure how it read.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. What else do we have? And we already voted to table triple N, so we go back to...
I just wanna mention, on triple M, I handed a bio on the individual that you have before you, just for your information.
Oh, on Mr. McShan from Harlingen?
Yeah.
I think he's a great appointment, so...
Good choice.
I think he'll do a great job.
He couldn't be here, 'cause he was out of state today.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to, the only one we left pending was, I think...
6A?
Well, but of the V, 5V, I think we left pending for the presentation.
Right.
So we'll leave that pending, and we'll move on to item 6A, budget amendments, line item transfers, honorary salary schedules.
Judge Protem, commissioners, you have the budget amendments that were placed in front of you. The first one is... The, uh, first one is a budget amendment for Constable Precinct Four out of his drug forfeiture. It is a regular operating transfer, I mean, a budget amendment. And the next one is for the Sheriff's Department, again, with drug forfeiture fund, and that is just to cover regular operations. Uh, the next pages that you will see are line item transfers. They are all budget neutral, um, and they are generally just, uh, maintenance and operational, uh, line item transfers that are being done. Pages two through pages four of the line item transfers, they are, for the most part, all, uh, special revenue. They're all, um, grant funds that, uh, have been received and it's a reallocation between different line items to, uh, to accommodate the, uh, the expenditures within the grant guidelines. I don't know if the court has any questions on the budget amendments or the line item transfers. The, uh, next salary schedules that you have, there is, uh, one salary schedule for the, uh, fifth admin region. And, uh, that is, uh, we're requesting the court to approve that. That is for the employees that are employed by the fifth admin region now that the seat is in Cameron County under Judge Alveda. Uh, we also have, and again, that salary schedule is all funded by proceeds from the fifth admin region. Uh, there's also a number of salary schedules for the juvenile department. I remember the last time they were presented, there were some questions and some clarification that the court was, was requesting. They are all, uh, budget neutral, it is reallocation between slots. And, uh, Chief Ramirez is here to address any questions the court may have regarding the juvenile salary schedule.
Any questions?
So moved to approve, second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item six C, approval of minutes of the January twenty, two thousand and eleven regular meeting, February third, two thousand and eleven regular meeting and February eighth, two thousand and eleven special meeting.
Uh, move to table, I have not had an opportunity to review.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that will be tabled for another day. Uh, item six D, consideration approval of policies and procedures for Padre Island Board of Adjustment pursuant to, uh, twenty-two thirty-one point zero and eight, Cameron County, Texas.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, in your packet of information, there should be a booklet like this. These are the policies and procedures, uh, for the Padre Island Board of Adjustment of Cameron County. Uh, this is a document that the board and county staff has, uh, been working on for, I'll say, what, the past six, eight months since the board was, uh, appointed. Uh, it is a complete document, has been reviewed by legal. And, uh, on behalf of the, of Board of Adjustment and staff, uh, we recommend that it be approved. If there's any questions, uh, Board Chairman is here this morning, uh, to answer questions, if any.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item six E, consideration approval of inter-local agreement between Cameron County and the city of South Padre Island regarding reinvestment zone number one, city of South Padre Island.
Judge, um, we ask the chief table this item for the next Commissioner's Court meeting, please.
Motion to table, second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, um, let's go ahead and take the presentation. Yeah, let's, we'll take care of that one first. The, the one that requires action, we're going to take you out of order, uh, with the Health Department, so we can, um, take care of that. So we'll take item four B first. Presentation by Cameron County Department of Hea-
C.
I'm sorry, four C, presentation discussion of the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services Animal Control Program.
Good morning again. Just for the audience's sakes, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Yvette Salinas and I'm with the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services as a health administrator. Um, I'd also like to take this opportunity to, to introduce Raquel Castillo, if you can just raise your hand. Uh, she's the Environmental Health Director and Gustavo Olivares, who's the assistant, and Charlie Agado, who's the animal control supervisor. This presentation is a follow-up to the presentation that was given to Commissioner's Court on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine. Back in June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine, this is the same page that we presented, so I'm going to just go ahead and go through it real quickly. The animal shelter was built in nineteen, about nineteen eighty-five and has seven general population kennels and three quarantine kennels. Additional kennels are needed, but the current septic system does not support another kennel. So we're very limited on the services that we can provide at the animal shelter. Based on the animal shelter area, which is a fenced area, again, the septic system cannot be expanded. A euthanization room is needed as euthanization is conducted in a semi-open area. We also need a rabies control room needed to perform the necessary procedures to send specimens for laboratory analysis. This process is also conducted in a semi-open area. Therefore, the bottom line is that the animal shelter has reached its maximum infrastructure capacity. And to, to improve on and expand the animal shelter, a redesign needs to be conducted for the animal control program office, the animal shelter, we have a chemical storage out there, and we also have an incinerator out there. And so we would really need three different type of facilities with their own entry in order to, um, try and improve on the animal shelter. Subsequent to our meeting in two thousand and nine, um, officials within the department met with, uh, the different municipalities and we explained to them, we gave them a copy of our Commissioner's Court presentation and we explained to them that we, we were having difficulties in meeting the needs of the Cameron County jurisdiction and the city jurisdictions that we were assisting with. And so we asked them to consider to, to start upgrading on some of their services or to start talking to their commission and making some changes within their own municipalities that would help support, um, themselves and, and Cameron County as well. And part of our discussion was that, um, the animal control program has changed throughout the years and it's not really just limited to, um, animal control pickup. You know, it's, it, we have other things that are going on with animal controls such as the preparedness component, which involves the Animal Issues Committee. And in that Animal Issues Committee, it's a regional, um, operation between Cameron and Idago County to try and address and trying to prepare should there an event happen on how we're going to work together to evacuate and pick up points and, and, um, and how, what, what we're going to do with, with animal carcasses should the need arise. We also talked to the municipalities about vector control. Um, I think, I think everybody understands that the biggest concern was the financial, how to financially support this with Cameron County and with the municipalities. So we agreed to give them some time to, to talk to, to their commissions and to see if they could make some changes. So again, this was back in October through December, two thousand and nine. Animal control is really based on the Texas Health and Safety Code. A Commissioner's Court can adopt the minimum standards for rabies control and they can also adopt ordinances to establish the animal control program. The Commissioner's Court can also enter agreements with, uh, public and private entities to carry out animal control type of activities. Currently, we do not have any agreements with anybody.
We have no agreements with any municipality?
No, Commissioner, we don't. Also, um, tells that the Health and Safety Code establishes that the court shall establish a local rabies control authority and that local rabies control authority is the health administrator for the Department of Health and Human Services. And so, um, it also talks about adopting ordinances for registration of dogs and cats. Um, I'm not going to read the bottom part, the bottom part is really for municipality, but it's basically the same thing that I just outlined for, for the court. So based on the, on the state statute, Cameron County does have an ordinance. It was approved by Commissioner's Court on February eleventh, nineteen eighty-five. And the purpose was to regulate roaming and stray dogs and cats in the unincorporated areas of Cameron County. And it defined, the ordinance does define animal as a dog or a cat. And unincorporated areas means any part of Cameron County that is not already subject to the jurisdiction of a city, town, municipality, or village. This is our animal control budget. It's, um, we only have one budget for environmental health, so we estimated what the costs were for animal control. And so we pulled out those items that were, um, directly, um, that had to do with the, the duties of animal control. We have a supervisor, we have three animal control officers, and we have a clerk. And then we put in some time for the Environmental Health Director and for the assistance time. So there's some management in that, in that one in particular. So as you can see, most of the budget goes into the staff as opposed to the, to the supplies and to the, um, to the other operations such as vehicle fuels and, and so forth. It did, this hundred and eighty thousand does not include vehicle purchases, which probably run fifteen to twenty thousand dollars each. It does not include the incinerator, which is probably another fifteen to twenty thousand. We just finished putting a roof on the animal shelter and that was, I believe, about thirteen to fifteen thousand. And it does not include other costs that are associated with the animal control operations such as, let's just say, my time, our, uh, Mr. Nogosa's time who does our financial, it doesn't include legal's time, purchasing and auditors. So we believe that the animal control budget is, is pretty much, um, higher than two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we did want to let the court know that we do generate some revenues and these revenues are, are generated based on dog and cat registrations and quarantines. Um, in FY two thousand and ten, we generated over ten thousand dollars in revenues. But as you can see, when you compare it to our hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar budget, um, the revenues only generate about five percent, five point seven percent of the budget. So that pretty much means that our budget is seventeen point five times greater than revenues. And then we took the number that we presented in two thousand and nine and at that time it was fourteen point six times greater than revenues. So animal control, uh, when you compare it to the revenues, it's, it's not a, you know, a, a self-funded program. It's more of a, a public health service. This was also presented back in two thousand and nine and we believe it has not changed. You can see numbers one through seven, these are state-approved shelters. State-approved shelters means that the Texas Department of State Health Services veterinarian has gone out and has made an assessment of the facility and has approved it. It also means that a local veterinarian has, has, um, assessed the facility. So it takes two different assessments in order to, to be a state-approved shelter. Um, Combs, all, Combs and Los Fresnos both also have a state-approved shelter. The next column, the impoundment facility, that's more of a holding pen. And so that would, uh, be Primera, Riondo and Santa Rosa have holding, have an impoundment facilities. While the other jurisdictions, um, do not have a state-approved shelter or an impoundment facility. These are the services.
Justice, justice, we have a requirement to have a facility because of the statute? Do the cities have any kind of requirement? Do you know?
I, I believe that they can create an animal control program, but I don't believe that there's a statute out there that forces them to do it.
Okay.
Okay. This is the, we tried to get our numbers together just to give the court an idea of the services that are being provided to the different entities and to let the entities know as well what their numbers are looking like. So if they need to budget something or if they need to consider what is actually going out into their communities, then we wanted to provide them with that information so that, so they could take that back to their commission and let them know what it is that had been happening in, in their communities. So the, for the most part, one through six, those are the self, self-sustaining, they're self-sufficient. There's, there's minimal, almost rare assistance provided to, between the county to or from the cities. But if you take a look at items eight through nineteen, there's a variety of things going on and that really is just based on what the individual municipality, what services they provide or, or they don't provide. So you can see that on the animal pickup, um, Cameron County, if we look at, just as an example on, on Bayview number eight, Cameron County picked up, um, twenty-five animals in the, in the Bayview area. And if you look at the quarantine, we did not quarantine any animals in the Bayview area. And if you look at the euthanization, there was twenty-four euthanized. And that goes down for the, uh, the other municipalities. Combs does their own animal pickup, but they do request assistance with euthanization. Without really identifying any of the municipalities, I think some of our, our concern, uh, within the department is that times are getting tougher for everyone financially. We did have one of these entities here that requested that Cameron County provide them with some temporary support uh, because they were going to have a tax rollback and weren't sure what was going to happen. And so we agreed to provide them temporary support for a few months and it's been a few years. And so, you know, that's really our concern is as, as times become even more that, much more difficult financially that, that we'll have to encounter these situations where there will be more reliance on the county when actually we probably just need to work closer together so that we can address the animal control and the preparedness component. The bottom half of the screen, um, is strictly the animal pickup part where it talks below the, the second, uh, yellow line. The animals euthanized and the dead animals released to wild, animals released to owner and animals adopted, rescued. Those numbers do match up and it just tells you what happened with those animals. So this brings us to the possibility, we did talk to the different municipalities when we visited with them. And really, our goal is not really to charge the municipalities, but we're hoping that if they take a look at the possibility that Cameron is going to charge the facilities and maybe that they can, um, take this information back to their commission and say, and let them know the, that Cameron may be charging. And so they may want to just, you know, reinforce their own infrastructure, but we did want to let them know uh, about the, the possible fees. Uh, right now, if you look under the services, whether it's the animal pickup, room and board, quarantine, euthanization, incineration, laboratory handling and postage, medical, same type service, just, we threw it in there because on the next slide, um, it just basically means, same type service means if, if there's a self-sufficient municipality, if they call and they ask us for something, uh, and if we need the same service later on at a future date, then, uh, we may not want to charge each other. We did take, it, we, we tried to contact various entities and it's very difficult because, uh, everyone handles animal control very differently. So we, in addition to trying and getting another entity, we did get a veterinarian quote what was going on within here in Cameron County. There was but one veterinarian willing to pick up animals, but that was just for emergency purposes. And we, uh, we also found out that, that it's about fifteen dollars a day to board. They would quarantine for twenty-two dollars a day. They were willing to euthanize for seventy-five dollars an animal. Uh, this, uh, incineration was a hundred and eighty dollars. And we contacted Idago County, that, they were one of a few that we contacted, but this is the one that we thought would probably be best for the presentation. Idago County does their own transport. They don't house everybody in Idago County, whether it's a municipality or the county. They do take it to one facility and that facility charges a sixty-five dollar flat rate for room and board. And that includes all the services such as euthanization, disposal, laboratory handling or any medical concerns that might come up. And they also have a flat rate of sixty-five dollars.
We.
That's a non-county operated facility, right?
True, Commissioner, yes. Mm-hmm. It's a humane society.
Right.
Currently, Cameron County, the only fees we do charge, and that's more, uh, it's a fee that's charged to the general public and that's the registration fee to register your dog or cat within the county. your dog or cat within the county, and then, uh, a room and board quarantine, uh, per-day fee of six dollars. But those are the only fees that are currently approved by the court. We had a hard time with this one, um, and the reason we had a hard time is because, like I said, everyone's kind of all over the place with, um, what their, what their needs are, and, and we, you know, we really tried to get information from other entities, and really what it boiled down to was for us, an option one, um, we did a calculation of seventy-two dollars per animal, and that seventy-two dollars would include the animal pickup, the room and board, the quarantine, the incineration, and the laboratory handling and postage. Um, there are some entities that only want assistance with euthanization, so the seventy-two dollars would include the, the euthanization for those entities that, uh, had their animals picked up. But if they only wanted euthanization because they do their own pickup, then we came up with a figure of thirty dollars. The thirty dollars and the seventy-two together, uh, based on what happened in 2010, does calculate out to the two hundred and thousand dollars that I presented earlier as far as the budget. Um, there's some medical, there's a medical component within the animal control program that the county has been picking up, uh, the medical fees, and just, let me give you an example. Um, we have an obligation when we take in an animal, a quarantined animal, and we have to return that animal in basically the same health that we received that animal. But there's times that, um, that it's really just too cold to, to leave the animals out there at the animal shelter, because we don't want them to get sick and then return either a sick dog or a dead dog. And so when it's really bad out there at the animal shelter, then we go ahead and we work something out with a veterinarian, and we get charged for the room and board of that animal. We have been picking up that cost, whether it's, uh, whether it's a municipality or whether it's a county animal. Also, we need to make some allowances for, um, if something does happen, if we're gonna take on the liability of taking on these animals, uh, for someone else, if something does happen to that animal, and it hasn't happened to us before, but let's just say, you know, he breaks a leg, well, he's, he's gonna need some care. And so, this is, this is our proposal, is that whoever's jurisdiction it is, that, you know, that they pick up the cost of, of that animal care. Option two, if you look at that, it's, it's broken down, and it's really a hodgepodge of the information that we receive from the other municipalities. In comparison to the other municipalities, it is very low-end. We did not use the figures that we got from the other entities because they were very, very high. But option two, and I'll be upfront with that, is really almost twice the amount of option one. Really, in the end, all we're trying to do is, we're trying to find a balance for, you know, the general, you know, welfare and safety of the public. We wanna work with the municipalities, we wanna have a good working relationship with them, and I do believe that, uh, everyone is struggling, but we just thought we would bring this information to the court because, uh, we do need to, we do need to do something different. And if, if anyone has, it, I don't think that anyone has been able to come up with any other ideas other than possibly charging the municipalities. I know that, um, there are some concerns by the municipalities regarding being charged, but at the same time, um, you know, we are taking on a, a great burden and liability for, for picking up these animals in a jurisdiction that is not within Cameron County. So, our department is trying to find a balance, because it is important to us that animals are quarantined when someone gets bitten, but at the same time, we are taking on that liability. The staff works seven days out of the week, they have to clean those, that, those kennels every day, they have to feed the animals every day, it doesn't matter if it's a holiday. Um, so, in the end, um, this is where we're at.
You say we're taking on liability, but don't we, do we have an obligation to take that liability on?
I believe that, um, our obligation is to the unincorporated area.
Okay, so, then it's optional for us to serve incorporated city limits, is what you're saying?
I, I believe that we need to work with the cities. Uh, I do not want to turn someone down for a dog bite, because, you know, that's, you know, when you're talking about possible rabies, it's, it's really not worth it in the long range. So we need to find a way to work with the cities.
Sure, but I, I mean, one thing is, if we have an obligation to do it, we have to do it no matter what. If we don't have an obligation to do it, then, you know, why would we take on a liability without having that obligation? And so, in other words, we need to know how to proceed in dealing with these cities. I'm, I'm in agreement, we need to work with them, and we need them to do their part, but we need to know, I guess upfront, are we obligated to do it no matter what, or, uh, we're doing it because it's always been done that way?
Judge BoTin, we've, we've looked at this issue. What we find is the statutes talk about the county's obligation for unincorporated areas of the county. Um, it doesn't say anything about any areas within the city limits of a municipality. So, we have stated that our obligation is to the areas that are of the unincorporated part of the county and not within the, the city limits of municipality.
We've kinda done this, I believe, as, as just being good neighbors to the cities, and also in that nothing says that they can't go and just release them in the county, you know? I think that's happened in the past, you know, where you go outside of the city limits and just, oh, there's your dogs on, you know?
He just, he walked out of the city limit of Los Indios, so now he's counting?
Yeah. But I think that it would be, you know, this, you've had many meetings, Yvette, with these folks, with all the municipalities, going back years, and they know that, you know, sooner or later, we were looking at some way to, uh, you know, just be fair about how the county has compensated for costs incurred to do what, what they want us to help them with.
Okay. No, I, I agree, I just wanted to be clear on whether or not we had an obligation, but I think if we don't have that obligation, then I think it's easier to say, look, we don't have this obligation, we're willing to work with you, you need to come to the table.
And for the most part, it won't be that much. I mean, it's gonna involve maybe a bill once a year to them.
And, um, the effective date can be today, it can be the beginning of the fiscal year for Cameron County's fiscal year. It, it just depends on how we wanna continue to work with them.
Have you gotten a, a written response from these others, the municipalities you've talked to? The reason is, I think we have a health and safety issue regardless, you know, Rancho Viejo or, or Los Indios or whatever, they're in the county.
Right.
They're in Cameron County, so-
And, and that's the balance that we have difficulty with, uh-huh. Uh, actually, we, we, I believe we got one written response to date? What, two? Okay, we have two written responses.
Okay. Could you get us copies of those? Could we get copies of those?
Uh, I believe they received copies. Okay, but the court already got responses? But late in the day yesterday, mm-hmm. So you may have them in your email, I know one of them was, was late yesterday. So, but we, we will forward them again.
Okay. I probably, I just got back into town.
Okay.
Late last night, so.
So, that concludes my presentation, unless there's any more questions. I did wanna, you know what, I did wanna, I did need to say one more thing. This ordinance is strictly dog and cat, okay? It doesn't include possums, and it doesn't include raccoons, it doesn't include everything else.
Skunks.
Um, our animal control officers are trained for dog and cat, okay? We do have representatives here from, uh, USDA, David and Manuel. Um, it's a court, did have some questions regarding wildlife services, um, they too have their limitations as, as does Cameron County, but, uh, really the bottom line is, Cameron County needs to go back to the basics of the ordinance, because that's what we're authorized to do, is dog and cats. We're not authorized, or are we trained to do anything beyond dogs and cats?
No woodpeckers.
No woodpeckers.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Well, this is just a presentation.
Yeah, it's just a presentation. I mean, we're gonna be taking action on five V, uh, but we wanted them to present first. Do you have a comment on the presentation? If you'd like to come up with, we'll hear your comments.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
My, my name is Roberto Madrano, and I'm the mayor of Rancho Viejo. And, uh, I, I hear the, uh, you know, the call for, you know, reduced expenses and so forth, everybody's struggling. Uh, my only concern is that, uh, the court does not implement this at this time, uh, for obvious reasons, at least for us. Uh, we're in the middle of a fiscal year, and we're not able to, uh, obtain any, any funds, uh, to cover any expenses at this time. Uh, if, if the court would, would take action to, um, to just delay it until the beginning of the next fiscal year, that, that would, that would work for, for our town, so that we could prepare, uh, uh, during the budgetary process. Now, uh, as far as the services that are being provided to our town, uh, we really don't have a, a, an issue with, with, uh, with the cat population, and as far as dogs, uh, as the presentation indicated, uh, for oh-ten, uh, I believe sixteen dogs were, were handled at, at our town. We estimate that we would have an average of, of about one dog, uh, in which we would, uh, you know, ask the county to, to help us out. Uh, our main concern is the wildlife. It's not, it's not really the cats or the dogs, it's the raccoons, it's the skunks and so forth. And up to two weeks ago, uh, or, or maybe more, maybe, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, those services were being provided to the town. Uh, and, and the concern now is that, uh, the, the services have been, have been terminated, and, you know, because these, these animals, some animals could potentially carry rabies, a disease, and so forth, uh, I, I would, I would ask the county, the health department to, to re, re, re-implement, uh, the, the service to pick up these animals at least to the end of the fiscal year, so that, so that it'll give us time to, to, uh, to work on a solution. But we definitely, uh, hear what the county's saying, what the health department is saying. We would like to work with the county. Uh, we're a small town, a, as I indicated, we don't have a problem with cats, dogs, maybe one, one, one dog per month. So it's cost prohibitive for, for our town to, to, to establish a, uh, an animal control program in which we would need to, you know, construct, you know, uh, holding, uh, facilities and, and, uh, and hire personnel full-time. We just don't have the need. So we would, uh, request respectfully that, that the county, um, consider working, uh, you know, on a, on a, an agreement with, with Rancho Viejo. And, uh, we're, we're, we're just looking to the court, uh, to see what action the court is gonna take in order for us to, to start, you know, rolling up our sleeves and working, uh, with our budget, upcoming budget. Um, but until then, uh, we, we had heard discussions, we had heard the county, um, you know, uh, back in oh-nine, uh, October of oh-nine, when they ca, came to us and, and, uh, gave a presentation to, to the staff, but no action had been taken up to that point. Again, my request, uh, is that, that no action be taken on this, no implementation of any fees until the end of the fiscal year. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe you need to comment on the wildlife component. Um, our staff is not trained for wildlife services. It's a basic, uh, animal control officer's training, and it's, uh, it provides information on, on raccoons and possums and snakes, but it's, it doesn't train them how to handle them. So, um, our staff is, is really, uh, overwhelmed with the dog and cat situation, and we provided some assistance with, uh, minimal wildlife, like possums, but we are currently overextended in some of our services, you know, it, it depends, we could be behind, we could be caught up, we could be two months behind, we could be four months behind. You know, Hurricane Dolly put us four months behind, and it took us, you know, a year and a half to catch up.
When you, when you say be, I'm sorry, when you say behind, behind in what?
In response to some of the, some of the requests that we get from the, from the public, including Cameron County jurisdiction.
They'll call you today, and four months later you show up?
Well, we, and that is the reality of it. That's the truth of it. I mean, that's, that's what it is.
But you're caught up now, though.
We're caught up now. I mean, we're not very proud of it, but, but we are overwhelmed.
You need help, is what you're saying.
Well, we need, we need to do it differently. We, we do, we do.
But this wildlife situation in, in the Rancho Viejo area, did, would it, did you arbitrarily stop picking them up, or had you been picking them up before, the, the possum issues and the wildlife? Have you, where were you doing it before?
We were doing minimal.
Okay.
We were doing minimal. And so, and, and so recently, we decided that it's not even in our ordinance to be doing this, and we, actually, we'd been working with, um, the wildlife service as well, and we were, you know, taking a look at, and we've had this problem, we've had this ongoing problem. And so, that's when, when we receive another request, we tell them, okay, we're gonna do it one time, but you really need to work on your own, you know? We gave them a list of, of, of providers that they can contact to provide those services.
And these are private?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Cameron County, we, we too have had to contact private enterprise for, you know, for a wildlife service that was really beyond the scope of, you know, our animal control officers. So we've, we also have had to foot that bill.
So was Rancho Viejo made aware of the fact that you were gonna stop doing this?
We-
Or did you, did we just stop doing it?
We didn't stop doing it, we let them know that this was happening, and that probably the next request that they would get, that we would approve, and we sent them a letter indicating that we're gonna re, we're gonna approve this request, but in the next one, you need to take care of it. And we have a copy of that information, we can give that to you.
Kinda like bees also, right? Kinda like bee requests.
Right.
You know, the same thing. You know, like beehives and bee issues, and we, we're not trained to do that.
Right, and not required by statute either?
No.
Okay.
Right, a, and he's making reference to, um, one of the projects that we had been working with. Um, the wildlife service representatives are here, and that's why they're here, in case this issue did come up, and they can better respond than I can. But, um, the county does have, it's not within my department, um, the county does have a contract, uh, with wildlife services to provide services, uh, within Cameron County, but my understanding, when we had a conference call, is that that, uh, agreement is really between Cameron County and wildlife services for the unincorporated areas. And if a municipality needs wildlife services, then the municipality needs to contract with, um, the USDA wildlife services.
May, and maybe you can kinda get that information out to the municipalities when we start implementing the-
They're here.
The new phase. That way, they know, 'cause I think part of the problem is, like, for Rancho Viejo, because in the past we've done it, they have the expectation that it's part of our duty or that we will always do it, so-
It's true.
Definitely, we need to get that information out, and, you know, I think everybody understands with, the way the, the budget is, not just here, but statewide and around the country, everybody's having to tighten up a little bit, and things that we used to maybe do as a courtesy before, we're not able to anymore.
And I, I think that's how we ran into this problem, is that just as a courtesy, uh, we tried to comply with the request, and then it turned into an expectation. And so now we're trying to just do what it is that we are authorized by the court to do.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
Move to acknowledge report.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's take up 5V. Consideration possible approval of the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services Animal Control Program fee schedule for providing animal control assistance.
This, this one, we just lay, put on top of your work area. When you went into the executive session, this is the one that we would like for the court to approve. It just provides a little additional clarification on the, on the euthanization. My recommendation is that the court proceed with option one. And the court may want to consider with October one, which is the county's fiscal year. But that's my recommendation.
Any questions, discussion with Ms. Salinas? Do I have a motion to approve?
As of October one.
October one, being the next fiscal year.
Show move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We needed a little discussion? You didn't ask for any discussion?
Oh, apologize. Any discussion?
My, my only, my biggest concern is I will vote to approve it. But going forward, I think we have to do a better job of communicating with all these municipalities or other unincorporated areas that have assumed in the past that we would do this service and get some kind of clarification. Rancho Viejo happens to lie in my precinct, so I, I do have a concern about it. And I'm not saying they can or can't afford it, but they need to be aware of it and we need to have some discussion with them as how, how we, how we act going forward. So please, let's get this back on the agenda.
Okay. And Commissioner, and we'll do that. We'll go back out again. But we, we did go out, October through December two thousand and nine.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted, I, I just, you know, now that it's become an issue, let's, let's clarify it and go forward.
And, and just, I mean, we have a few months, so if you're just, you know, making a point to sit down with everybody and take them the information, because I think he was wanting the information. That means probably everyone else is gonna have the same request or, or need for information.
Okay, and we'll send a, a copy to the court as well.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm David Trevino with Wildlife Services, troubleshooter for Corpus Christi District. I just wanted to add a little bit to that as far as helping the municipalities with the wildlife complaints or concerns. We have a blanket agreement with the county to do any type of wildlife control. And, or if someone has a wildlife conflict, we, we try to help them out or give them information to resolve their, their situation. And with Rancho Viejo, we had been helping. We've been doing it for many years. Our concern was, we have no place to, to dispose of the carcasses. And in some municipalities, we have no authorization to discharge a firearm, to dispatch the animal. We don't, we could certify our technician to use euthanasia. At this time, we don't have that accessibility. Now, we were requesting from the health department if they could assist us once we trapped the animal in the municipality to euthanize the animal and then just, you know, euthan, incinerate the carcass. And that's where we're at. And we don't want to overstep our bounds either, you know. But we do need assistance because we have no place to discard of the carcasses. So that's where we're at, at this point. And if that may, maybe answer some of your questions. But in the past, we've always helped. Whenever we received a call, we responded. We'd either loan out equipment or took care of it ourselves or resolved it somehow, so.
Would that, that, before the disposal of the carcass, would that include transport of the carcass to the county facility?
We would be able to, if, with Mrs. Salinas here, we spoke to her about maybe keeping them in our freezer until they had enough room to incinerate the carcass. We would probably be able to do that. But now if we get overwhelming calls from all these municipalities, we probably wouldn't have the storage capability, you know. So it is, it's something that we have to really work on. But, and the other thing, the concern was involved, well, the cost of using the incinerator. And, well, I think that would be between the municipality and, and the county to come up with some type of agreement on that.
A fee schedule, yeah.
We would probably handle the wildlife complaints or calls.
Do you, you charge for those services though?
No, this is a, we have a contract. The county pays us for our services.
Well, but if you're gonna deal with the municipalities, does that come under the contract that the county has?
That, that, excuse me, that's been, that's the problem. We have a contract with them to provide services in the unincorporated areas of the county that we pay monthly.
Right. And, but, and that's what I'm asking. So from now forward, whatever's not in the county, what's within the city, we're gonna start charging the city for our service. And so that's why I'm asking if you charge the cities for their service, for that service when you do it. And if not, maybe that's something that you need to, to set up with them. Because, and, and correct me if I'm wrong legal, but I think if, if you're gonna charge the city for a service, the way you charge us for a service, and part of that service is cremating or incinerating or whatever you wanna call it, then when you provide that service to them, if you're gonna come use our facility, we'll probably have to set up a fee with y'all for that use, not with the city. Because we really, it's, there's no, nothing between us and the city, it'd be between, be between you and the city.
Yeah, I understand. No, the, it's a blanket agreement. We do urban, rural and urban. Anything in, in the county, we take care of at no charge. The county's paying for our services. And so that's why we don't charge the municipalities for our services.
So the, the, the contract says Cameron County, doesn't say Cameron County except for incorporated areas. Is that correct?
Well, and going back to the agreements, I think there was a misunderstanding on an agreement we had with the county, like Cameron County Park Systems. That was only between us and Cameron County Park Systems to trap coyotes. They were not paying for our services. That comes out of the county with the field agreement we already have with the county that's done every year. And, and once it's approved, you know, we, like I said, we handle all wildlife complaints. But on a one-on-one basis, we do have a, a regular agreement that everyone has to sign to give us permission to do, you know, to enter their property. Whether it's, it's a private individual or, let's say, Cameron County Irrigation District, whoever.
But you, you mentioned earlier that you don't have authority to go into some,
Into urban, yeah, like.
Into cities and discharge weapons. You don't have that authority.
No, we have to get that authority through the police chief. And the police chief sometimes will authorize that, especially if it's in a rural area or the outskirts of the, of the city.
And, and we can't give that authorization. So what I'm getting to is even though you, we have an agreement with you, our agreement can only be to the unincorporated areas, correct me if I'm wrong. So, I mean, maybe it's time to readdress the agreement so that everybody knows, including the cities, what exactly we're responsible for and what we'd ask the cities to be responsible for.
Okay. And, and the one that could address that, that would be probably our supervisor. You know, if you had any further questions. And I'd be glad to give you all his phone number.
Okay. And, and I'm just saying, I mean, since we're making the move in the direction to, to start taking care of this issue the way it needs to be taken care of, I think these are other issues come up that are, that are ancillary to the, the problem here that we need to take care of. So I would probably suggest that you get with Ms. Salinas and, you know, probably get something worked out to where if, you know, it's not part of the fees here for an incineration of, because this is just for cats and dogs, right? As I understand it? So if there's gonna be a fee for skunks and raccoons or whatever else, you know, we end up dealing with, we'll probably have to update this then. If that's something you're gonna.
We will look into it. We're very hesitant to do anything more really beyond cats and dogs. We, we might be able to do something limited. There is a community around the incinerator. And when the wind shifts, you know, the smell goes that way and we get the complaints. So we, we try to be careful with, you know, the incineration process because there is, there is a community around that area.
Okay.
Okay. But yes, we will work with them.
Thank you.
Judge, you had a motion a second. Just call for a vote.
We voted, but, we already voted on this. We just didn't have a discussion, so.
Thank you, sir.
And, and I thought, well, now the previous discussion, the discussion was over. I apologize. Okay, let's move on to item four A, presentation by Terry Crocker, CEO, Tropical Texas Behavioral Health, to provide brief agency overview, update on new initiatives, funding issues and future challenges.
Good morning to members of the court. I'm Terry Crocker. I'm the CEO of Tropical Texas Behavioral Health. And I'm here to give an annual update in terms of what's going on with the agency, the numbers of people we're providing services to and some of the challenges we have facing, facing us coming up. As, as the court will recall, we were established in nineteen sixty-seven. We're actually the first of thirty-eight other community centers in the state of Texas. And we are governed by a local nine-member board of trustees that are appointed by our catchment area and sponsoring agencies, which are Cameron, Adago and Willacy Counties. Our executive team, made up myself, Holly Burrell, B. Trejo, Connie Aguirre and Daniel Gutierrez. We are the outpatient psychiatric service provision. We provide outpatient mental health and intellectual disability services to adults and to children. We are a significant part of the mental health and IDD safety net for South Texas. And are, and we serve adults with bipolar disorders, schizophrenia, major depression and intellectual and developmental disabilities in children ages three and up. There's a very long list of services that we provide. Very substantial amount of crisis services that are twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, provided in the communities. Jail diversion services, veteran support services for employment, our assertive community treatment teams, case management, psych evaluations and supported housing and living. This is, I, I do have some data that's specific for Cameron County that the court has asked me for in the past. I also have some system-wide data and I have some data regarding the issue Commissioner Garza mentioned the last time I was here that I'll touch on in just a moment. We have a, just over a thirty-eight million dollar annual budget this year, five hundred and seventy budgeted full-time positions. And of that thirty-eight point two million, we'll spend just over twenty-four million on salary and benefits. Our funding from the counties out of that total budget amount is just over one point one million. Cameron County's contribution is a little over four hundred thousand. It's about thirty-five percent based on population percentages throughout the camp, the three county area. Our projected third-party payer dollars that will earn and drive back into service provision this, this year is almost sixteen million dollars. Our person served, and this is unduplicated counts, just in Cameron County. The columns across the top are in the different service areas. Mental health adult services, mental health children services, intellectual and developmental disabilities or MR services. And you can see the increase there from two thousand nine to two thousand ten. Once again, this past year, we've experienced a very substantial increase in the number of people that we are serving. And again, important with those numbers that these are unduplicated counts. The majority of the people we serve get multiple services all through the year, but they would just be counted one time in these figures. So we're doing what we can to try to keep up with the pressure and need for our services. On the IDD side, system-wide, we provided about sixty-three thousand services for adults and just over fourteen thousand for children. And there's the different service breakout in terms of the specific services we provided. In mental health services, over two hundred thousand services for adults, seventy-eight thousand services for kids, that's system-wide. And in Cameron County for psychiatric treatment medications, over nine thousand services for adults and twenty, almost twenty-two hundred services for children. Crisis screening and intervention services, the adults, fifty-eight hundred services, twenty-four hundred services to kids. Forty-two percent of all those services were provided to Cameron County residents. Again, in contrast to the thirty-five percent contribution that Cameron County has. Our total crisis private inpatient psychiatric hospitalization for adults last year, seven hundred and fifty-three. And total private inpatient crisis bed days, two thousand one hundred and eighty-one. And the third most major part of our budget after salaries and benefits is what we spend on psychoactive medications for people who are unable to pay for those medications, just over three point eight million dollars last year. I wanted to give some comment in regards to admissions out of the valley. In late two thousand seven, we initiated a new project trying to impact the number of people that were going out of the Cameron, Adago and Willacy County areas for services. At that time, we had just about one and a half persons per day on average having to go out of the valley for inpatient psychiatric care. At that time, that was a major, major problem because it was, that burden was falling on local law enforcement, the sheriff's departments, the municipality PDs to take those persons to that inpatient facility. Oftentimes, that would be as far away as El Paso or San Antonio. It was a major problem. What we, we started doing at that, at that time was trying to use what little monies we had to contract with some local private providers for short, like three-day stays to try to stabilize that person and prevent them from having to go into longer-term care and to do that somewhere in the community. With input from all of our local areas, planning that was done with elected officials, with our counties, with our hospital providers, we put a plan in place and did a request to Department of State Health Services for additional monies to fund that. We knew very early on, we weren't gonna have enough funds to last all year long to divert people from going out of the valley. That's the intervention lines you see when additional DSHS funds were awarded in April of oh-eight for that program. Since that time, compared to baseline, we've cut the number of people having to go out of the valley by over seventy percent. So it's made a substantial impact. Now, we still have issues, as Commissioner Garza mentioned, in regards to how those resources are utilized amongst the counties. I'm gonna talk about that here in just a moment. This, the prior data was agency-wide. This is specific to Cameron County. Again, out of the valley admissions, you can see a similar sorts of, of decrease was experienced there in regarding the people needing to go. It still occurs, but it's a much lower level. Again, for example, in January ten, you had one person. The year, years before that was many, many times more. Now, for our private psychiatric hospitals, we have contracts with the three inpatient psychiatric hospital providers through the valley. We work as, as much as we can to try to keep that playing field level. We fall under different procurement rules and regulations like most governmental entities do. We're a quasi-governmental entity, but we still fall under those procurement rules and regulations in regards to how we expend those funds. So we have two of those providers that right now are at the exact same rate per day for a hospital bed stay. Valley Baptist historically has been higher for that. Because of that rate being at a, at a higher rate, they've not been on the same level or same playing field in regards to where that choice has been for if someone needs to go on an inpatient bed. Now, we've been working with Valley Baptist. I've met with their CEO. I've been in contact with them frequently over the last few weeks, trying to address that issue. And I got a communication as late as last night that another contract amendment would be coming through for us to consider. Tropical wants nothing more than to have this absolutely level so we can let patients choose where they wanna go. We, that serves us, it serves the patient and it serves all of our, our local resources as well as everyone involved in terms of that stakeholder. But because of that disparity in regards to the price, there's been a, a significant difference in regards to the utilization of those different facilities. So with that, just a few comments on our expenditures in Cameron County. I did wanna mention that seven hundred and fifty-three admissions were funded last year. With those specific dollars I was talking about, two hundred and forty-four, thirty-two percent of them were for Cameron County residents. County residents. And Valley Baptist does admit an average of about 10 patients of Tropicals per month with under, other funding other than the, than that crisis, those crisis dollars that I mentioned. Cameron County residents make up 46 percent of all the consumers served by our agency, and our agency's direct program expenditures in Cameron County are 49 percent of all of our budgeted funds. And one thing I did want to point out, that Rio Grande State Center in Harlingen, they are a state facility, so they fall under rules and regulations of Austin. Last year, they treated 100 patients from outside the Rio Grande Valley area. We go into this, this crisis mode with utilizing these crisis beds when Rio Grande State Center is full. They've been full very, very frequently. But when we have people come in from outside of our catchment area, outside of the valley, that means there's going to be more pressure on those funds because when we go to them and they're full. It's something that the court needs to be aware of. We continue to work with them on. We'll continue to do what we can to maximize our use of those beds. We have, Tropical has an allocation at Rio Grande State Center and at other state facilities, but we can't access those beds, not only because of the distance, because of the issues we have with trying to get people there, but because there's other centers utilizing those beds, and they're always full as well. It's just one more mitigating variable that plays into our ability to access beds and how we utilize these funds. We continue to be concerned about our ability to have enough funds to make that last as our local population grows, as awareness of mental health issues grows. Last year, we actually overspent on those funds and we dipped into our reserves to make sure we didn't have to stop this program. At some point, we're going to get to the point where we're not going to have enough funds to do that. I'm going to keep the court aware of that, if it looks like we're going to run out of funds, but that is a concern of ours. As our local population grows, as the, the beds at Rio Grande State Center doesn't grow, as we don't get more funds, or as the state cuts our funds, as we go into a tough legislative session, we're going to have some tough times ahead that, that I foresee. We haven't reached that yet. We're doing all we can to utilize these beds just efficiently and effectively as we can, but I will keep the court posted on that. Again, our goal is equal, equitable, equitable distribution of services based on need across our catchment area and efficient use of all of our available dollars. And some things for Cameron County, as hopefully the court knows, we have a new building we moved into in 2007 behind the post office. We are in the midst of acquiring land for a new building in Harlingen, just off of 499 Loop. That's in play right now. We hope to be building a, an even building, a bigger building there very soon. Last year, through additional funds through Department of State Health Services, we were able to eliminate our children's waiting list. However, that's already begun to grow back this year. Again, as the need continues, those, those issues continue for us. Right now, Tropical is over-serving in the amount of, the target numbers of people we are funded to provide services to. For example, we're funded to provide services to about 366 children. Right now, we've got over 1,300 kids in services that we're just providing services to. But again, as that pressure grows, so does our capacity issues. Currently, we have about 800 adults on our waiting list, something we're trying to work through, but again, of concern as we're looking at possible cuts through the state. We get a lot of support from this court and through all of our elected officials. We're hopeful that they'll continue to, to work and be interested in our mission at the Austin level, but we're just kind of holding our breath to see what happens in Austin for us in the coming year. And we also continue to provide services at Cameron County Jail, our psychiatry services there. We do that covering about 50 percent of our costs. I do need to get with the judge, we do need to get a signature on that, that contract very soon, but we're pleased to continue to be able to do that. We continue to work to expand our local network. We've added two more providers that provide our types of services that are private providers, that's Wood Group and Atlantis Health Services. They're in the midst of expanding right now into the Cameron County area. Wood Group is already providing services in Cameron County. Atlantis has committed to expanded, expanding this year into Cameron County. And our goal is to continue to bring more providers focusing on children's mental health. That's our biggest issue right now.
Are these inpatient or outpatient?
This is all outpatient, all outpatient work. And just a, a couple of comments on outcomes. We did receive a national accreditation late 2008. We're up for our three-year follow-up this summer. That's just getting scheduled for August. I'm confident that we'll continue that accreditation, and our audits have been extremely good for the past few years, actually for the past seven or eight years. And how we want to help you provide services to your constituents. If a crisis comes up, a problem comes up, a complaint comes up, please call me or one of my staff anytime. We can't always guarantee we'll solve the problem, but we'll guarantee that we can do all we can to get involved and help, help the situation, do whatever we can. That's what I have for today unless there's any questions or further things I might comment on.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes, ma'am.
Shortly after the new year, I was leaving the courthouse and I ran into, into a, a, an employee from Valley Baptist. And then, we had been concerned about how some of the patients were being held in the emergency room even overnight in an effort to send them out of Cameron County when Valley Baptist had hospital beds available. That is my concern. And I'm hoping that in your conversations with the CEO from Valley Baptist, that this, these situations will be minimized because, you know, we had a crisis here in Cameron County for quite a while with mental health issues. And from this, a lot of effort was put into it, a mental health task force was, was organized. And so, now that we have these services available here, it, it concerns me that we have to have ER services being given to these patients when we have hospital beds available here in Cameron County and in Brownsville. And I hope that your efforts in, in speaking with the CEO from Valley Baptist, that this is not going to be the situation from now on.
I believe that this will impact this, and, and there's a, a number of issues related to ER services. And one of the things we stay cognizant of is what happens with a patient with mental illness when they come into the ER and how are we calculating how long they're sitting there because of their waiting or they're waiting for a, a medical clearance to take place is one factor that we, we always look at. But I believe that funding like this and collaborative efforts through all of the different stakeholders, including Valley Baptist and all the providers through the valley, are continuing to make positive effects on situations like that. But we always have a, a number of variables from issues of transportation and all sorts of things, but that's something that we're very, very aware of, is pressure on the ERs and something we're trying to do with every, every resource we have to impact that concern.
And I guess that's another point that, that we need to look at. Our resources here, we're using county law enforcement to, to transport these patients out of here, okay? And so, that's the other, that's the other issue that, that I'm concerned about when we don't have to, are, are other law enforcement agencies bringing them from out of town to Cameron County, or is it just the other way around?
Not to my knowledge. They shouldn't be brought to Cameron County, unless they're going to a Rio Grande State Center. That may be a possibility, but they shouldn't be in, into the ERs. But the transportation issue is a, is a big problem. I, I'm pleased that right now, there's work being done to revise the Texas Mental Health Code because there's a lot of issues in the Mental Health Code that is aggravating the problem, if you will, in regards to transportation. Who can do that? Under what circumstances they can do that? Can they transport someone against their will? There's a lot of issues around that, that I'm hoping it will be improved on. There's, there's a, a lot of room for improvement in the Texas Mental Health Code. It hasn't been revised in probably 30 years.
And I know that, that Cameron County went, went the extra step and I think was assisted by Valley Baptist in getting our officers certified to handle these patients. So, I, I, I thank you for your presentation, but I do really look forward to being able to, to keep some of our patients here without having to have them stay in overnight while you all are preparing a bed out of Cameron County, when we have it available in Cameron County.
Okay. And I would encourage you to get clarity in regards to those, those data points as well, because when that occurs, there are phone calls that go to my operate, Chief Operating Officer and sometimes myself, and I can tell you that those have been exceedingly rare because we are in very close contact with Valley Baptist when those sorts of things happen. So, I hope that those data points aren't being portrayed as this is the, the current state of affairs, because I don't believe it's the case. But regardless, when that happens one time, it's a problem and we don't want it to happen.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the other issue is, is not just a burden on the patient, it's also a burden on the families.
Absolutely.
When they're not kept in the local, local area.
Absolutely.
Where the families have access to, to their loved ones. And the transportation issue has been graciously subsidized by Valley Baptist, and that's, that consideration needs to, you know, that needs to be considered when you evaluate, well, where should they go?
Right.
And maybe they charge a dollar more for this or five dollars for that, so hopefully you can work out those issues.
I'm hopeful we can.
Okay.
I believe we will be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. My name's Dan Sanchez. Nice to meet you. First of all, you talked about crisis money. What, what is crisis money?
It's, it's the funding that we get from, from Department of State Health Services. We get a portion of our funds and they have what they refer to as strategies, and that crisis services is one of those, are, is one of those strategies. So, we'll get a, a certain portion of funds for whatever we do in the way of crisis service provision. And then, we got additional funds that we applied for in a grant sort of, of situation that were competitive funds that required some additional local match that Cameron County and Adago County helped us with. So, we got added more funds for those. Under our crisis services right now, we include those inpatient short-term three-day beds. Those are the contracts we have with Valley Baptist, Doctor's Hospital Renaissance, and South Texas Behavioral. And it also includes all of what we refer to as our MCOT, our Mobile Crisis Outreach Teams, which we have two of those teams in Cameron County, one in Adago County, that go out 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year long, and help with any crisis that may occur in the community. That would be evaluation, screening, crisis triage, going to the ERs, evaluating people for whether they are eligible to go into a state hospital bed. That's our, our function is not approving the admission, but we, we have to function as the gatekeeper to the state hospital beds. That's one of our crisis services as well.
Okay, now, gatekeeper to the state hospital beds is different as opposed to temporary emergency mental inpatient detention, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And these funds, what restrictions or parameters do they have on them in terms of, you talked about you had some restrictions, and so because of the funding, you, you have restrictions on them? What restrictions are there?
Well, in certain amounts of the, that, those competitive dollars that we got for those crisis funds, we set them up in a way, after getting local input from our stakeholders and going, and going through planning sessions, that grant request was sent up in a fashion specific for those hospital beds. So, we use about $1.2 million annually specifically for those three-day inpatient crisis bed day stays.
So, is it written in the grant specifically that you have to go to the less expensive stay first?
No, that, that falls under different rules and regs that we fall under, like Grants and Contracts Management Act, Texas Administrative Code, the Local Government Code, and those sorts of things that fall under how we procure services, whether we go out for RFP and best value and all those sorts of things. So, there is some room for us to move, as, as I've discussed with the CEO from Valley Baptist, but it becomes a balancing point for us. Like I said, we used all those funds last year, so if we have a 15 percent variation in one provider, we have to balance that out with, well, okay, if we're not going to be able to make these funds last all year, how are we going to balance in terms of spending more in one area and less in something else?
So, there's no actual requirement that you have to go to the less expensive one?
My understanding is that there is.
Okay.
There, there's rules and regs.
I would like, and I would like you to get me those rules and regulations so I could look at them. I'd also ask you to review chapter 573 of the Mental Health and Safety Code. Or let me, let me actually read it to you, and maybe you can clear, clear, clear up for me so I understand it correctly.
Sure.
How your agency has an involvement. It says, "Except as provided by subsection H, an applicant for emergency detention must present the application personally to the judge." And it goes on through, and then it says, "The magistrate shall issue to an on-duty peace officer a warrant for the person's immediate apprehension if the magistrate finds each criterion under subsection B is satisfied." Says, "A person apprehended under this section shall be transported for a preliminary examination in accordance with section 573.0212. Number one, the nearest appropriate inpatient mental health facility," which I believe those are the three that you talked about, Valley Baptist East, Doctor's Hospital Renaissance, and South Texas Behavioral, right? It says, "Or a mental health facility deemed suitable by the local mental health authority if, if an appropriate inpatient mental facility is not available." Okay? So, my reading of that statute says that if someone comes into the ER, either in Harlingen or Brownsville, let's say Harlingen, and there's not a bed at the Rio Grande State Center, to comply with this statute, it says, "You have to go to the nearest appropriate inpatient mental health facility." To me, that means the east campus is the nearest, if you're in Harlingen, and there's no bed at, at Rio Grande State Center. To me, that means if you're in Brownsville, the nearest inpatient facility is the Valley Baptist east campus. That's the way I read it and I understand it. I may be wrong. I know counsel can interpret that for us. But my question is, as a judge who signs this order, there should be a strict compliance, I think, with the statute. I was a former justice of the peace for eight years, and when I came in, we would get presented the applications and we would be given the orders. And the orders would state where they were going to go. And I never questioned it because I assumed things were being done right. Well, when we started having these issues of, and, and I'm, I'm referring to the same thing that Commissioner Benavides was talking about. We had a patient in Valley Baptist overnight, there was a bed available in Brownsville at the east campus, yet Tropical Texas is saying, "No, we're waiting for a bed to open up at one of these other two facilities." And my concern is, why do we have to wait? Is it a funding issue? Is there a statutory requirement? So, I went back and I, I did what I should have done the first day I came into office as a JP, is I read the statute. And when I read the statute, it doesn't say anything here about checking with the mental health authority first. That's only if one is not available according to the statute. So, my reading is, if there's nothing available, we pick up the phone and then say, "Tropical Texas, we don't have anything available. Direct us on where to take this patient." And I'm, am I correct or incorrect, or do you have a comment for that?
Well, one comment I would make is that we, as part of our contract with DSHS, in that contract, it specifies as part of our responsibility as a local mental health authority, as I mentioned earlier, is to serve as gatekeeper for those state inpatient psychiatric beds. And there is a difference between the state psychiatric beds versus these crisis beds that we've gotten additional funding for, for a special circumstance, if you will. So, under that contract rules and regs, that's where we have to provide that screening to say that, yes, this person is eligible, yes, they need to go into a state bed. And what we try to do is, just like you said, say, "Well, okay, there's not a state bed right now. We think there should be one opening up in the next day or two. Send them to Valley Baptist east campus and we'll deal with trying to get a bed opened up and get that transfer done after the fact." But again, there may be, there may be circumstances that, that impact that, and it could be funding-related. But your point, your, your, the comment you make is on point in regards to... But your point, the comment you make is on point in regards to where people are taken and the magistrate's order around that. And we always want to do the nearest facility there, but there are some other contract requirements we have to comply with.
Well, and I'd like to see what those are, because if the statute requires us to go to the nearest facility and we're not doing that, if our judges, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to meet with our JPs and I'm going to say, "Judges, you need to follow these statutes the way they're written, and then go from there." And so, if there's something in another statute that overrides this issue, then I think we need to look at it. But this is kind of where I'm going with the backend of that, okay? Let's say we have someone in Brownsville that's taken to South Texas or Doctor's Renaissance in McAllen. They're there for a day or two and then they're released after their emergency detention. Once they're released, what happens to that individual? They've got to get back home.
Right.
Right? Whose duty is it to get that person back home?
I would have to look into that.
Why, I'll read it to you. In looking 573.024, it says, "Transportation after release." It says, "Arrangements shall be made to transport a person who is entitled to release under section 573.023 to the location of the person's apprehension, the person's residence in this state, or another suitable location." Okay? If the person was apprehended by a peace officer under subchapter A, arrangements must be made to immediately transport the person. If the person was transported for emergency detention under subsection A or detained under B, the person is entitled to reasonably prompt transportation. The county in which the person was apprehended shall pay the cost of transporting the person. Okay? So, that puts it back on us as a county.
Right.
And so, I have a real big problem with us not following the statute, but being required to follow the statute, you know? If the statute requires us to go to the nearest location, then the nearest location is where we're going to send this person. And one of the things that I hate to hear is, when I ask, "Why do we do it this way?" It's, "Well, it's always been done that way." I don't like hearing that. I want to know why we're doing it. And so, the statute here is very definitive, and it's requiring us not only to take care of these patients, but it's requiring us to transport them back to where they were apprehended, where they live. That puts a big burden on us as a county. And so, when these patients are being sent out of the county based on Tropical Texas saying they need to go, not based on, "Well, we're not following the statute," I have a problem with that. Okay? So, I would ask you to give me any funding requirements, any contractual obligations, and understand, I believe there's a difference between the contractual obligations and funding requirements. I mean, just because you chose as a provider to contract with certain people, I don't think releases the obligation that we have to the community and how these state funds are processed. So, I'd like to see if we can go through that and make sure we get this cleared up, because there's a lot of issues, especially in the mental health arena, where these patients aren't being cared for. I just got back from Austin, and we had a presentation by a former reporter from the Washington Post, who's had an ongoing problem with one of his own children and how he was treated, and how our system basically doesn't care about these patients. And we need to put an end to that, at least here in Cameron County, we need to do something. And we are going to make a change. So, part of it is by starting to comply with the statute. And so, I'd be happy to sit down and visit with you or work with you, but we do need to move in the direction of doing things following the legal letter of the law.
Absolutely, and that's our intent to do so always. And I would be happy to meet with you on that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Do I have a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Second, moved by Commissioner Nanda, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All signified by saying aye. Everybody?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any discussion? We're good. Okay, what else do we have? Item 4B, presentation by the Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services on the Cameron County Indigent Burial Program.
This presentation is going to be a short presentation, but I'd like to introduce Pedro Inojosa. Mr. Inojosa is the one, his program is the one that actually oversees the indigent burial program within the department. We're going to start with the Texas Health and Safety Code. This is really what outlines the responsibilities of the county. The Commissioners Court of each county shall provide for the disposition of the body of a deceased pauper. The Commissioners Court may adopt rules to implement this section. Despite the county's authority to dispose of the body of unidentified, sorry, deceased pauper by cremation, section 716.101 of the same code prohibits a crematory establishment from accepting such remains for cremation. Accordingly, a county may not have the remains of an unidentified pauper cremated. And basically, you can bury and cremate identified deceased, but when the deceased is not identified, then you can just bury, because you may need that information in the future for criminal purposes. So, based on that statute, Cameron County does have a policy. It was approved back in 2002, and Cameron County's responsibility is to bury or cremate local paupers, transient paupers, and decomposed bodies found in Cameron County. There is an eligibility process. Eligibility consists of, the deceased must have resided in Cameron County in the last six months, deceased does not have life or burial insurance, and family must not exceed the income guidelines. And so, we did outline a couple of examples of a family size of one may not exceed $500 monthly, and a family size of four may not exceed $590 monthly. Indigent burial applications are completed by funeral homes with unidentified or unclaimed bodies, or a family member, or a close friend. Upon eligibility and prior to the burial, a certificate is issued by the department. The certificate qualifies the deceased as an indigent burial, and funeral homes certify that the payment by Cameron County constitutes payment in full for funeral home and cemetery expenses. And the certificate really is for the purpose that, to ensure that the county is not making a partial payment for the burial, that is, payment in full. So, we're having the funeral homes certify that information. Compensation, indigent burial funds are for body preparation and burial expenses only. Cameron County assumes no responsibility for funeral or wake services. Indigent burial funds cannot be used as a down payment or partial payment. Indigent burial funds are payment in full, and funeral homes cannot seek additional funds from another source, including family members. Indigent burial funds do not pay for transporting deceased to and from another city or state for burial purposes. And lastly, indigent burial funds will compensate burials, and according to the following payment guideline, for those deceased that are one year of age and older, $1,000, and if you're an infant, $300. So, it's just a flat rate. These are the applications, and this is historically what has been happening here in Cameron County. For the most part, the numbers have really just kind of stayed the same for the last four years. The only change that we might see in 2011 is it appears we might deny more individuals than we have historically in the past. But for the most part, the processed applications stay within around 150, 160, and then the applications that are approved, the numbers are generally the same. This one talks about the funeral home compensation. The numbers from the top chart and the bottom chart do not match up, because we could have processed and approved an indigent burial towards the end of the fiscal year, and then we got the bill at the beginning of the new fiscal year. Did I say that right? We could have approved an application at the end of a fiscal year and paid with new fiscal year's money. So, we took the actual numbers, and so the numbers don't match up as far as the compensation, but that is what was processed and compensated during 2007 through 2011. So, the program runs, it's about $150,000 program annually to bury the deceased. This is my last slide, and it's just letting the court know that any funeral home that wants to participate in the indigent burial by referring individuals, they can. We do not restrict who, with the exception of the eligibility, we do not restrict with who we work with in working with the indigent burial program. So, we do have quite a few providers within Cameron County, and we're really pleased with the service that they do provide. That's it. Are there any questions?
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Nanda, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 4D, presentation, the first quarter revenue report for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I placed the first quarter revenue report on front of your, where it shares at.
Okay, we could, if, if we could turn to the second page, please, of the report. Under observation, number four, under observation, for the first quarter, the entire park and recreation department experienced a total increase of 128,000 or 20.3%, and that's for the first quarter of fiscal year 2010, 2011. Isla Blanca Park itself experienced an increase of $79,440 with an average quarterly occupancy of 37%. This was 2% less than the FYI 2009, 2010 first quarter occupancy, and a 14% increase from 2010, 2011 on the first quarter revenues. Andy Bowie Park had an increase of $36,413, which is 91.6% from the FYI 2009, 2010 first quarter. Adolf Tome Jr. Park itself had an increase of $5,799 or 17.8% from the 2009, 2010 first quarter. The public beach experienced an increase of $6,900 or 83.5% from FYI 2009, 2010 first quarter. And the community parks had a decrease of $225 or 60% revenue from the FYI 2009, 2010 first quarter. If you turn to the next page, under system, total revenues, the total revenues for the park system is $759,396, which is an increase of 20.3%. That's from 2009, 2010. Now, if y'all want to go individually through each park, if you want to go to Isla Blanca Park, Isla Blanca's parks revenues for the year, for fiscal year 2010, 2011 were at $629,621. That's a 14.4% increase from the 2009, 2010. Y'all have any questions in regards to, before we go to Andy Bowie Park?
These increases are based on the rate increase?
Yes, sir, they're based on the rate increase, and also, and also, we have had an increase also in occupancy, and also, I guess in...
The toll system.
The toll system, yeah, the daily collection.
The parking?
The entry, the daily entry fee.
Because I did see on Isla Blanca, it said 2% less than fiscal year 2010 on the occupancy. So, the occupancy went down a little bit, but the amount of people coming in increased?
Increased, yes, sir.
Okay.
Andy Bowie Park, we experienced an increase. The total revenues is $76,170, which is a 91.6% increase. And the increase is due to, now that we have a new concession, which is a new hotel at Andy Bowie Park, that's where the majority of the increase came from, the revenues from the new concession lease. We had $46,249 from that concession lease. Were in 2009, 2010, we didn't have that hotel at Andy Bowie Park.
And for the first quarter, probably won't be as high as the summertime months, we'll probably have a bigger...
Oh, yes, in the summertime months, we're going to generate a lot more revenue than what we do in the first quarter. It starts getting busy right after, right when spring break starts, and it gets busy till after Easter, and then it dies down for about a month, and then it starts picking up through the whole summer.
So, we should see some pretty good numbers come summertime?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Adolf Tome Park, which is on the following page, we experienced an increase of 17.8%. Total revenues were $38,288. And the increase came from, also from the RV sites, you know, the rates, raising the rates of the RV sites, and also the new toll collection system that we have in place as well. Public beaches, we experienced also an increase of 83.5%. Total revenues for public beaches was $15,167 on public beaches. And public beaches is Beach Access Number Five and Beach Access Number Six. And the next one is community parks, we had a decrease there, 60% decrease. Our total revenues there were $150 for the community parks, and that is for the rentals of the community center.
Which centers are rented?
El Centro Cultural, Commissioner?
Oh, they rent that out?
Yes, we do rent, we rent out the auditorium there at the Centro Cultural, mostly for baby showers or, you know, small little gatherings.
That building in Santa Maria by the park?
I'm sorry.
Is that also?
That's also a rental también, the Santa Maria.
And that one doesn't produce more?
I don't see, the only thing I have here, Commissioner, is for the rental at the Centro Cultural, but I'll get back with you on the Santa Maria.
Because I know they use that building all the time, so you may want to look into that.
I will, most definitely. And maybe they forgot to place on the report, but I'll look back and I'll give you all an answer, you know, when I get back to the office today.
Maybe we let the community know that it is available for renting.
Yes, it is.
Are all the community centers rented at the same price, $150?
I believe so. I believe all the community centers are, it's a flat rate for both community centers, the Santa Maria and El Centro Cultural.
Okay, thank you.
Now, on expenses. Now, our expenses. For Laurel's Park, on expenses, you know, what, what we do, we, the way we average our, our budget expenses a month is, we take the total budget that, that, for the year, and then we go back for what we budgeted the previous year, and we average it out on how much money we're going to be spending each month. And I know for Laura's Park, we had a negative in November, $10,510. Speaking to Martha earlier today, that, that money there should have come out of the COs. It was for a fence that we built at Laurel's Park. So, that money should have come out, out of COs. On the community parks, for December, we had a, a negative $2,323.89. A, a lot of this money came from, we had to pay some property insurance, a property insurance reduction of $1,500. We also rented some equipment for the State Highway 48 boat ramp when we placed the bollards, which was $400, and we also bought, I guess, bought the cable for it as well. So, that's why there's a, there's a, there's a difference there. On La Paloma Park, as you see, December 10th, we have a negative of $2,798.48. What happened there, the, the electricity bill for November, we paid it on December 2nd, and the electricity bill for December, we played it, paid it on December 22nd. So, that was two utility bills that were paid on the same month. Let's see, that brought us... Bronny Road Park, what we did there, we had to install some shutters. As y'all know, November, December, we're off 2,029.12 and 5,088.54. We had to install some shutters at the Bronny Road Social Service Center, and we also installed a sprinkler system as well. And not only that, our, our was by fixing, I'm sorry, fixing the, we fixed the sprinkler system. And by fixing the sprinkler system, our water bill went up three times. So, it went up from $200 to $700.
Now that it works.
It really works. Yes. And Isla, Isla Blanca Park, it seems like we stayed within budget on the expenses. Andy Bowie Park as well, we stayed within budget. At Tome Park, we were, we're down, I guess, on Tome Park, we're off $243.56 in November, and $3,116.86 in November. Part of this money went towards purchasing some things that are, for the toll collection system, like tickets, we put a new, we had to put a concrete pad. We had to buy some new backups for our, for our computer system. We have, also had to fix the security lighting there at, at Tome Park. So, and we also, and let me see what else, and basically, that's, that's where, that's where we're off on that. Public beaches, we're, now we're staying within budget. And part at, at Parks Administration, November, we're out, we're off $24,929.80, and says debt retirement established at $240,000. So, I guess that's what we pay for, for the debt retirement, $24,000. Is that correct, Martha? Is that correct? Our Greens Division, November and December, we're off $3,669.80 and $1,867.89. The majority of this money went towards repairing a, a vehicle repair of $800. We also overhauled our moors as well. We have four moors, and we, we also repaired our weed eaters. We had six weed eaters, and, and bought some supplies and equipment as well for our moors. And basically, that's, that's all I have for the report. Overall, the, the revenues are looking good. They're looking better than what they were last, last fiscal year around this time. And the expenses, I know that Javier and I, by the way, I just want to let you know, Javier's not here with us today. His father's sick. He's up in Houston, so if we could keep his family in our prayers, please?
Definitely.
Yes. And, um, but, um, what was I going to tell you? On expenses, Javier and I, we've been talking, we're going to have a meeting with our park staff. As y'all know, gasoline has been going up. What, where we hear, it might go up to $5 in the summer. And we, we, you know, when gasoline goes up, everything else goes up. Materials go up, you know? So, that's a meeting that we're going to plan with, with our, with our maintenance department and to make sure that we're, we're as conservative as possible. Yes. And the rest of them.
Thank you, Joe. I, I do want to bring something to your attention. At the Bronny Road Center last weekend, we had some medical students doing screenings.
Yes, ma'am.
And I had to move them into the kitchen area because it was freezing on one side of the building. I know we had, we had fixed it during the summer. It used to get very hot, and then it was really nice. Now, it's back.
We've been having difficulties with that system there, but I guess Robert, Robert's here. We've been working with Marcelino on that, and Robert?
Actually, the week before, Commissioner, we had actually sent a group of technicians out there. They came and looked at it. We got with the original architect with the design of the building and the mechanical engineer that recommended the system. And we are trying to put some control measures in there to control it. We're trying to look into actually an air balancing system, but the, the controls that were actually installed are quite, quite fancy. Excuse me. So, we're either trying to either remove those controls and install a brand-new system, or maybe try to adjust those controls to where they would adequately cool the entire building evenly, because we have had, we've had that problem, so we're, we are trying to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to acknowledge report.
Second.
Motion acknowledged by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4E, presentation and update on the status on the Distributed Renewable Energy Technology Stimulus Grant Program.
Judge Commissioners, I have a... I had a brief presentation here to show you the progress, but for some reason, it wasn't working a minute ago.
Have we just need to evaluate the head? As long as the panels work better than the computer, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, for some reason it...
Just fake it, Robert.
Yeah. We'll get it. Well, we'll mess with the, I'll move forward with the project. I don't have Mustadeno's password, so I won't be able to get in.
Just tell us.
The, basically, in a nutshell, what I placed before you is a one-page summary that outlines the project. I did have a, a brief presentation to show you the progress and some photos of the actual, the, the actual project in, in its entirety. Basically, what we've done here, we received a grant, or we, we applied for a grant back in 2009. It is a Distributed Renewable Energy Technology Stimulus Grant through the ERA Funding. Back on October 30th of 2009, we submitted an application for the grant. March 1st of 2010, we actually received the, we received the grant. The grant and the amount that we received was a total of $2.1 million. We decided that we would implement solar technology on county buildings. Considering the, the most, the most, to get the most benefit to the county, the Harlingen Annex and the San Bonito were annex, annex, were, were chosen to install a total of 276 kilowatts of PV solar, solar power on those two buildings. On March 9th, the CECO actually approved the contract between, or awarded the contract between the county and CECO. We issued an RFQ out to try to look for a consultant that would help us in progress or move this project forward, and given us their expertise on solar installment. Received responses back on April 20th of 2010. We selected a consultant on, it's just on the screen, it's not... On, on July 22nd, we selected McKinstry. The contract was awarded in late fourth quarter of 2010, and we began the construction right before the end of the year of last year of the solar panels. We, we've been working very close with AEP on both of these buildings. They're overlooking the project from their end and making sure that what we're installing meets all their requirements. We've had a series of documentations that have gone between us and AEP to make sure that everything is in compliance and that they meet the, we meet regulations. All those documentations, AEP inspections have all been complete for the Harlingen Annex. Currently, for this, for the Harlingen Annex, we are monitoring the system, and we're installing an actual web-based program that will help us monitor the entire savings that the solar panels are, will, the energy the solar panels will create. So, actually, as of, as of last week, the panels were tested, the system is on. So, as of this coming Monday, those systems will start generating energy and help for the reduction of total kilowatts per hour for the Harlingen Annex. The, the next step would be the San Bonito Annex, which we actually started construction on Monday. We've received probably about 80% of total material for the San Bonito Annex. We're in the process of signing the inter, interconnection agreements between the county and AEP for the San Bonito Annex, and we're expecting the completion of the San Bonito Annex with all the solar panels on March, the end of March, March 31st. So, as, as a quick rundown, total project was 2.1 million. The grant amount we requested along, we had a 20% match. It was 1.7 that was allocated from, from CECO. And our 20% match was 428,000. Now, what AEP has done, because, because we've chosen these two buildings, we also qualified for an AEP utility rebate. The AEP utility rebate was $87,500. So, now, in addition to the grant, we received an additional $87,500, which really reduced our out-of-pocket, our net out-of-pocket cost.
350.
Yeah, so it's like 340, 348, 800.
Awesome. Good job, Robert. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, so we're looking at a total of savings of a possible reduction anywhere from a 30, 35 to 40% energy reduction to these two buildings, considering our out-of-pocket savings with the, with the credit rebates, and we're looking at approximately, maybe about a seven or eight-year payback for, for this project. You know, totally out of pocket. So, anything else, of course, that we save, any other energy measures that we implement, of course, will reduce that time. Unfortunately, the, the laptop isn't working. It looks like it was locked out.
Everything you told us is right here.
Everything is right there summarized on one page, yes. I know Commissioner Garza was wanting some information, so he could relay back to some of his, you know, constituents throughout the precinct, but I gave him a copy before he left, so... But if any questions, let me know, and it's a good, you know, it's a great project. Thanks, Eddie. I think it's, we're moving in the right direction, going green, and hopefully, we can continue with more projects like this.
I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know why this came to mind. I just saw it on the top of the roof and thought about hurricanes. We updated our insurance to include that?
Yes, I worked with Martha and, and Tom. And actually, a good point, Commissioner, as far as these panels that were installed, there was 118 individual panels installed on the Harlingen Annex. There is a new technology that we used. It's actually, the, a panel consists of 40 cylinders, which consists, makes one panel, but they're about maybe two inches apart on each cylinder, so it allows the wind to flow through them. So, these are not, we did not penetrate the roof at all. They're actually anchored down, and they actually can sustain about 100 to 30, 140 mile-per-hour winds.
Wow.
They have been tested. We actually tested them recently from about 50 mile-per-hour winds recently, and they didn't move at all, and they're actually quite, quite heavy. If a hurricane, or we're expected a hurricane, we would try to anchor them down in some manner without trying to penetrate the roof.
Awesome.
So, but, thank you.
Move to acknowledge presentation.
Second.
Good job, Robert.
Motion acknowledged by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? All signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries, or in recess. God save this honorable court and these United States.